RT. I actually, yeah. Did we? The RTM public meeting, Public Safety Meeting at seven oh two. Okay, we're gonna start with the the roll call. And I just gonna call the names that I've listed here, I have presented Adams, Bailey, and Hanscom, anybody else? And myself, sorry, yeah. All right. Okay, we're gonna start with account number zero zero nine zero. The city police. On page one eighty of the budget book.
And then supplemental material is under appendix alpha.
What?
There's supplemental material. Appendix A.
Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm gonna need a motion or a figure.
City, open motion for six million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Second. Oh, oh. You don't want that, that's the whole amount. It is as appreciative, as appreciative as I would be of that.
Oh, yeah.
I don't.
I got that, okay.
So. If you look on page one eighty, account one zero nine zero zero is three million, eighty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight, however comma. The council cut twenty-five thousand, so the council's number to you.
Is six mil- it's six million, one hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and eighty.
That's the total.
The total. So I'll put a motion for three.
Oh, sorry, I.
No, mine is.
I don't have that figured.
Mine is twenty.
All right, hold on, let's do some math here.
So we have to mine it.
You have my number?
Yeah, three million, thirty-seven thousand, six eighty-eight.
All right, three million, okay, somebody, hey, this is your show. So you need, you need, so what was that number, three million, fifty-seven?
Three million, fifty-seven thousand, six eighty-eight.
Okay, I'm in agreement with that, we agree with that, right? Thank you, Groton Longpoint.
Three million, fifty-seven thousand, six eighty-eight, okay, so we do this in reverse.
Okay. I will reveal about discussion.
Absolutely, I'm late. I'm ready.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It better breaks now, yeah.
Yeah.
And I seconded it, so.
Okay. And that's the council's figure?
That's the council's figure.
Okay. Uh, mayor.
Thank you, all right, so I will read to you the letter that I sent, town manager John Burke. Says, please, attached, please find a copy of the city police budget for FY twenty twenty-five, the overall police budget for FY twenty twenty-five is increased by five point three percent over last year's budget. The city is once again requesting the town of Groton customary and traditional payment of fifty percent of the costs associated with providing public safety to our residents. Request of the town is calculated after personnel costs associated with the police chief salary and benefits have been subtracted. FY twenty twenty-five funding request is three million, eighty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Highlights in the budget include the following. The operating budget increases are mostly due to personnel cost. There's a contractual two point five percent increase for sworn personnel. There's a three percent cost of living increase for non-sworn person. We are requesting a purchase of three new SUV cruisers. These new vehicles will replace two two thousand and fifteen models and one two thousand and sixteen model. National standard for replacing police vehicles is three years, so we're out of date, beginning to incur cost costly repairs for the aging fleet. The current age of the fleet is ten point seven two years. This purchase will be the beginning of a five-year program to reduce the age to three point two years. And in doing so, will result in a savings in annual maintenance cost which are currently running in excess of forty-five thousand dollars. There's an increase for marine operations. The city of Groton is the only local police dive team for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five boating season. Marine operations will take place for a total of over fourteen, for a total fourteen weeks over the summer and be designed to educate operators and enforce boating regulations in the state of Connecticut, as well as offering immediate response for critical incidents. We're requesting funds for crisis slash mental health training. Proposed training will bring the department to a level when effective intervention and or de-escalation can occur. We're attaching, for informational purposes, a copy of the city's capital improvement plan for FY twenty twenty-five through FY twenty thirty as it relates to the police department. We look forward to meeting you to discuss the budget. Sincerely, Keith Hedrick, Mayor of City of Groton. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Burton, he's the chief of police in the city of Groton. Chief.
Evening, everybody, Dave Burton, I'm the chief here, been here since July of last year. So. Let's talk a little bit about the most expensive item there, which is item number two that the mayor was reading, and that's the SUV, SUV vehicles. So right now, we're looking at a ten point seven two year average for our fleet. We maintain top, uh, temp patrol vehicles and eight admin vehicles. Uh, in the past, what has been the national, the, um, the process has been to decommission the fleet vehicles and pass them down to admin, uh, because they get dressed, they get driven less. Uh, we're appropriated for a forty-two thousand dollar maintenance fee right now uh, for our vehicles, all, all of our vehicles, and to date, we're at fifty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, so we're eleven thousand dollars, I mean eleven, yeah, eleven thousand dollars over our maintenance budget. Um, that includes this year, unfortunately, replacing things like engines and transmissions on some of our older vehicles. So what I'm trying to do is get us into the warranty period for the powertrain, because that's the most expensive part of the vehicle. Um, there hasn't been a vehicle replacement program uh, in the past, uh, so we're trying to implement one. Um, and if we go for the five-year purchasing plan, then we will end up in reducing that fleet cost down to, uh, well, we expected to go under the forty thousand dollar mark, but, uh, we will be at that three point two year uh, maintenance, uh, maintenance period, which I think is important as far as maintaining the vehicles is concerned. Um, the council did originally approve the three vehicles and then um, uh, later reassess that and, and cut the twenty-five. So the discussion has to be obviously with the city as far as, okay, so do we go ahead and fund that additional twenty-five ourselves? Because the importance of those type of vehicles, I don't, I don't think can be overlooked. Um, we've had, we've had some bad weeks with vehicles being down. We've had periods where we've only had two or three vehicles available, unfortunately, uh, because other ones, besides their regular maintenance, uh, required such as oil changes, filters, brakes, tires, et cetera. Now, we've had some additional major expenses, like I said, engines, transmission, steering, front ends, uh, et cetera, so um, that's, that's a big cost, uh, it's a big increase because I want to ask him for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. And actually, just going to the CPCA, we might, we may have under budgeted that, uh, because we're looking at a fully equipped vehicle there, decent vehicle, uh, Dodge Serango, which tends to be at the lower end pricing, but, uh, right now, they're quoting me about fifty-four thousand dollars a vehicle, uh, to get all of the uh, that's a fully equipped, that's light sirens and, and then the partition that we have to put in it. So that, that's not a, um, you know, off-the-lot type uh, purchase that would come with the police equipment as well. So that's the first thing.
This is CPCA.
Oh, the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, so they had, um, uh, vendor expo, uh, last week. Uh, there was a whole bunch of, chief was there, chief, sorry, was there? Uh, there was a whole bunch of, um, different vendors. Um, they bring everything from software to equipment to vehicles. Um, camera, uh, camera equipment, communications, all kinds of uh, products that are offered to our type of profession, so uh, it's an interesting place to go and meet and greet because everybody's all in one place. So you do get to, uh, talk to a lot of vendors on that. Uh, the next, uh, increase was for the marine operations, so beginning of the, actually, the end of the winter, beginning of spring, uh, we had a, uh, community group, uh, that met with the mayor, myself, and Barbara Master, um, and it was regarding, uh, marine concerns. Um, unfortunately, what we were told and the stories being related to us are, uh, now after COVID. Uh, pre-COVID, it wasn't, uh, an issue. But after that, um, the operation of waterborne vessels, uh, was not reported to be great. Um, and there were a couple of near misses as far as swimmers and, um, uh, human-powered, um, vessels, uh, kayaks specifically, so they've asked for us to be more robust in our patrol of the waterways. That has not happened in the past, uh, over about the last five years, we haven't been on the water like that. Um, so that was, uh, an increase uh, to thirty thousand dollars, thirty-two thousand dollars total cost between overtime and, and boat equipment um, to get that up and running again. Um, so we do, did look at that, there is a letter of support, I believe, from the association, uh, accompanying the budget, was sent to this, uh, to the city manager, that's to the town manager. But, um, we're looking to put the boat in the water for the weekends, uh, four hours a day, uh, Saturdays and Sundays, because that's what's reported is where the problem is. Uh, the feeling is, and the EPs come to the same meeting as well. Um, but the feeling is between us, we can, uh, improve the water safety. Uh, and, and like I said, what's being reported to us is, it's not great right now, so. Uh, so we, we plan on showing more of a, um, uh, more of an appearance on that. Um, mental health crisis training, so. Right now, we're averaging a mental health call about every three days. Um, and when I first got here, uh, having come from a CIT-type department, which is Crisis Intervention Training Department, that was pretty standard that everybody receive, uh, the specialty training. Here, when I got here, when I asked that question, unfortunately, what I found out was that we only had eight of our officers, including myself, that are trained in CIT, which is mental health, right? So I know last year, there was a discussion on, and having a discussion with the mayor on this, council uh, had a talk to us about, hey, do you need a mental health professional? Okay, great. But in that process, I think that you have to have your response level up to a certain, um, professionalism type, uh, response before you start bringing about, talking about bringing additional individuals on. We are not, I did not feel, uh, in discussions with the mayor that we were where we needed to be, so what I'm gonna do instead is take the money that would have been necessary to install that professional, that mental health professional, and put it into CIT training. So at the end of this, we're going to get all of the officers up to that, uh, standard. That includes a maintenance, um, plan as well, so not only will we give them the forty hours of CIT training, but then they will receive additional four hours annually uh, to maintain that proficiency, because it, it, it goes away, right? Um, if you don't use it all the time, not that we don't use it all the time, because unfortunately, it's become pretty regular that we do, but there's always new approaches, there's new, uh, technology out there, there's, uh, new communications methods, uh, so we want to stay current as far as that is concerned. Um, referral services, whatever is out there in a community that we can, uh, have the officers um, provide those assets and provide those services to, to our residents. Um, so between the overtime and the uh, professional services, that's where an increase occurred, uh, because we had to pay for the school and professional services, then I have to pay the officers, obviously, to go and or you have to fiddle, uh, their overtime. So that's where I, I thought would, it would be better spent than, than going out and, and getting us a professional. Now, in the meantime, we have reached out to mobile outreach, uh, so there's always a plan B, right, you always have to have one. So we are going to have, uh, uh, mobile, if they, if the plans all go through, then we will have mobile outreach that'll be a resident in our police department, at least for a few days a week, uh, because what that allows us to do is personal attention then to some of our cases that come up. Um, and our, uh, mobile outreach worker will get to learn those individuals on, um, on a personal basis, uh, they'll know, you know, some of their background, uh, they'll know, um, medications, treatments, uh, assessments, et cetera, that have occurred, uh, and then they can, uh, take those services forward if they need to. And that's about it, oh, and then one other thing. So NextGen, uh, NextGen is, I'm, I'm, so I just went down the list as far as our large increases, right? So NextGen is another big increase, so NextGen, we used to, we used our ARPA funding to purchase NextGen, NextGen is a records management system. Everybody has to have a records management system, it's how we keep track of all of our, uh, activity. Um, unfortunately, we have a central square product right now, uh, that central square product is not supported, even though there was a vendor, uh, at last week's expo. Um, and a lot of our area departments have gone to, uh, NextGen. Uh, it is a local, the nice thing I like about it is it's a local, um, company, they're out of Connecticut. Uh, so service for us, as far as getting any technical help is not gonna be an issue. Um, and it's more up to date than what we have, it has, uh, different modules in it that we can choose to activate, turn on, turn off, as we, us. I'll give you an example, one of them is, um, what they call e-ticket writer, which is an electronic ticket capability, so we don't have to do that by hand anymore. It has that kind of module, has a training module attached to it, so we can, uh, push out training. It has a, um, a timesheet-type activity to it, push that out, it's got policies, we'll push that out. So it's kind of an all-in-one shop, so long as you willing pay for all these different modules. Um, so right now, we're just buying some of the basic, and it's an expensive type, uh, it's an expensive type purchase, uh, but our licensing fee, everybody has a licensing fee, we pay that on an annual basis, uh, right now, we're paying, um, what are we paying, we're paying about fifty-eight thousand dollars a year for Central Square. NextGen being a newer product and more inclusive is going to bump us from that fifty-eight to eighty-one. So that was an increase, uh, that we will be incurring. Uh, and that's it, I can take any questions, that, those are our big increases, so.
Any questions? Any questions online?
Yeah, yes. This is, uh, I'm sorry about that, I have a question for, uh, Chairman, or, or, Maril.
Yeah.
Oh. What, uh, what line or, um, page is this on?
Oh, this is page one eighty.
Okay, that's what I thought, and, and, and the motion was?
The motion was for what the council had cut, was the three million uh, fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Three zero five seven six eight eight.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jackie?
Oh, I'm, I just wanted to let you know I'm here, I had trouble.
Yeah. I see you.
Okay, all right.
Section A is just our backup material for both highway and for police.
Is there any, any more questions?
Can, um, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand, but for Mayor Hedrick. Um, how much will the twenty-five thousand that, um, the council cut that could conceivably have to come from the citizens? How much will that raise on mill rate, if you know, if you don't, it's fine.
Uh, I'm not sure, Ryan, we don't know. We, we haven't, we haven't run the number, I mean, it's so the, the city council has a couple options, they could leave the number as cut, they could match it by increasing, by adding an additional twenty-five thousand dollars, or they could, uh, match the cut and lower it by another twenty-five thousand dollars, which would be a fifty thousand dollar cut. But I don't see the council doing that. Uh, but I'm not sure what the impact. At this point, I'm not sure what the impact to the budget would be, because it depends on what the council decides to do. I mean, if we have to manage this, we will, uh, manage it somehow, I mean, the council had a recommendation for where to cut, but and I appreciate their thought, but they don't get to tell me where to cut. It's, they don't get to line out a veto, they can recommend a cut. And then it's up to the chief to decide, uh, what are you, where he's gonna cut and how he's gonna manage the budget. I'm not sure if that answered your question or not. Representative Massa, did that answer your que-? Oh, she's muted. Okay.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, any, any more questions? What I'm gonna do at this time, just to give it a shot, I'm gonna make a motion for the original figure of three million, eighty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight. Just basically, I wanna do it because I thought the way the council did it was unfair. The way they came out and they redid the figure again, so I just wanted, basically, I wanted to get it till we can go on at least that figure.
Sure. And ultimately, the, the whole body of the RTM.
Okay, second. Okay, second, yeah.
We'll have full deliberation and discussion and debate on this.
Chairman Barrow?
Yes.
Would you please repeat that figure?
Sorry, it's, uh, page eighty of the book, it's the original figure of three million, actually, three zero eight two six eight eight.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Mr. Mayor, um, did the council, town council give a reasoning on twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, originally, what they wanted to do was they wanted to cut fifty thousand for a vehicle. However, since I'm asking, since we're asking for half coming from a town, if you cut fifty thousand, that's hundred, you know, so they cut twenty-five thousand, and then my council could then match the twenty-five, or they could do other, other actions. But that's why they changed it to twenty-five, because that's, if my council matches, that's an equivalent fifty thousand dollar cut. Uh, but that was the, their logic behind, uh, Council McBride was the one that led the discussion. He didn't feel that he needed to have three, uh, vehicles in his year's budget. And, uh, but again, you know, we are, the chief explained the situation we're at with our vehicles and, uh, uh, and although I appreciate the discussion that ensued, again, it's up to us to decide where eventually we will, if, if the cut is sustained, where we will, or the chief will decide to cut.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel like the cannon's been kicked down the road many times, stepping on the RTM, that I, I support the whole original number.
Well, and, and the fleet, and I, I'm not talking about just my fleet, but if you look at the town's fleet, they're having the same same issue as well, and it's easy, if you're, when you're trying to cut a budget, and I do appreciate town council and what they're, what they're faced with, and why they're faced with it. Uh, but, you know, the fleet has been, like you said, it has been kicked down the road, and, and fleet's easy to cut, because you know, you don't have to tell anybody to go home. So I, I certainly understand, I yield the floor.
Any more questions? Okay, all right, now I'm gonna take a vote on that second figure of three zero eight two six eight eight. Uh, all in favor, say aye. I, Jackie, I can't hear you.
I'm technologically disadvantaged, um, I.
Yes. Okay, no?
No. Me.
Okay.
I'm not sure about Barrow, I mean, about, uh, Bailey.
Representative Bailey, how you voting on this?
Aye.
Aye? If, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. So that figure passes, or the two, any, uh, no abstentions, everybody voted, so, uh, that passed board, board to one. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Representative Barrow and the rest of your committee, thank you very much.
Next, we're gonna have, uh, account four zero one oh, Groton Longpoint Police, at the page one eighty-three, budget books. Okay, I don't have figure, so has.
Four hundred and thirty-five hundred, that helps.
What is that again?
Four hundred and three thousand, five hundred.
Or? Four three zero five zero?
Four zero three five zero zero.
For zero.
Yeah. But the original number, yeah.
That is the original number.
What is the original number?
The original, yeah, the original number.
Sustain that, so.
We did get cut, but not, not in public safety and public works.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Did get a cut, but not, not here.
Okay, I give a motion for that figure?
Oh, yes, so the motion for four three thousand, I will take.
Second.
Five zero zero.
Five zero zero, sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna speak to that. Well said.
Okay, um, I, I can read the letter, if that would be helpful, and then turn it over to chief. I'm Amanda Gallagher, I'm the president of Groton Longpoint. Um, you know, chief, um, Knowles. Okay, uh, our letter is sort of comes in through Public Works and Public Safety in one letter, so I will skip the Public Works. Police, the town of Groton is also responsible for providing the two subdivisions in Groton, the city of Groton and GLPA police protection for all of its Groton citizens. This has been accomplished through the town of Groton, funding a portion of the city of Groton and GLPA police budgets. GLPA is requesting the town of Groton continue to fund fifty percent of the GLPA police budget, and therefore, we, we are submitting a request of four hundred, three thousand, five hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The police services provided in GLP are also a benefit to all citizens throughout Groton, since these services provide mutual aid and shared support in emergency situations and supplemental backup when necessary. These police services, which are only funded at a cost of fifty percent from the town of Groton, are invaluable to protecting all of our Groton citizens. And then the, the, the details are attached, um, I should also add, as of the city, we do not include Chief Knowles', um, salary in that request, that is excluded. And I'll turn it over.
So this is basically a fully loaded budget, as every year that we come forward to the, uh, to the, uh, Public Safety Committee and so forth. Um, this is an, actually, an increase of thirty-two thousand dollars of what we requested last year. And it's mainly due to the fact that we have, you know, increases, uh, across the board as far as the operations budget. Um, as we all know, with, uh, we're, we're still working, uh, with the accountability, um, under the twenty-dash-one accountability law, uh, we're reaching and striving for our accreditation. Um, and, you know, in the town of Groton, we have Groton City, Groton Town, and Groton Longpoint. And it's nice to see that all of these departments are reaching their accreditation, Groton Town commended for their accreditation through Kalia, Groton City has theirs, and we're tier one, we're working on tier two. Um, but it be that as it may, I am the chief, and I'm also my own administrative assistant. So I, I, I'm looking for a little assistance with that. Um, we are a small department, we only run one person, uh, per shift, um, but we also, uh, you know, uh, parse out officers to other departments, uh, to do extracurricular, um, uh, patrols and so on and so forth, like last week, we assisted, uh, Montville with their, uh, uh, DDI stops and so forth. Um, we provided the town, I work closely with, uh, Deputy Chief Gately and, and Chief Zarro. Uh, last, from the, since the last time we met, uh, over thirty-one times, we've assisted them in one way, shape, or form. Whether it's to, to, you know, while they're tied up to, to send an officer up to you know, release the buses from Fitch, or to respond to, uh, the Hookah Lounge, uh, down on Route twelve, so we do provide that type of, uh, of, uh, assistance to. assistance to other departments. Um, again, we're working on tier two right now, as far as the accountability goes, and the accreditation for the state of Connecticut. And, um, we are, uh, over the last year, I've seen the, you know, certainly, as Chief, uh, uh, Burton said, we have licensing issues. Um, we have a, uh, an antiquated record management system, which I'm still working with, uh, which we are the last one in the state of Connecticut to actually utilize it. Um, so these are things, they still require licensing and so on and so forth. So everything that you see in this budget is for operations and, uh, in personnel and salaries. Uh, I'm not looking for any huge major increases, uh, I'm not looking for any major purchases, other than the fact that we are looking to upgrade our handguns, uh, to go to the red dot system, um, which most departments are now doing, uh, and it decreases the liability, because these, these are a much more accurate type of weapon. So, and even that is, is a slight increase, it's not, uh, not, uh, magnificent in any way, shape, or way, shape or form. And one of the last things I would kind of say about where our budget comes from, over the last eighteen years, I went back to the two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget, and I looked, and at that point in time, Groton Long Point requested, uh, two hundred and three thousand five hundred. Twenty years later, eighteen years later, we are asking for four hundred and three thousand five hundred. That's only an eleven thousand, eleven hundred, an eleven dollars and eleven cents increase per year over the last eighteen years. It's not really significant, but it'll help us manage our department and, uh, and keep our operations, uh, up to where they should be, as far as the training and so on and so forth. So we're all affected by, uh, you know, by, by these major increases, so that's where we are.
Any questions? Uh, seeing none, let me vote on the figure, four hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars. All those in favor, say aye, aye, aye?
Aye. Aye.
You opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You already signed up on the sheet, right?
What's that?
The.
I don't think we did, but we will.
Okay, I, this, like, I, I, your name's on there for a minute.
I have a question.
Yes?
I have a question. Uh, isn't there a C, C I P seven that we were supposed to do this evening?
Yes, that's coming up, we, we're gonna do, uh, we're gonna do, uh, town police now at account ten twenty-four, and then after that, we're gonna get C I P seven J.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're up.
Right, they went faster than I expected.
Yeah. Okay, that's gonna be on page one ten of your budget books? How these figures I got was perfect.
No, one oh five.
One oh five?
Yeah, one, one ten is public work.
Sorry, one, one oh one, I got, I'm just going on with that paper.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I'm looking at the figure.
Okay, sorry. One oh, one oh five, one oh four, one oh five, yeah.
Right, sorry for all the clutter here, all my different books, so. Want to make sure if you, uh, point out something in.
Okay.
Budget book itself, I have it, so.
I need a figure put out first.
Ten million six seventy-one, eight fifteen.
That's, that's the manager's figure, the council's, ten million five hundred seventy-one, eight one five.
Ten million five hundred seventy-one, eight fifteen.
Yeah. Second. The council's thing, okay, all right.
And we don't have to always start with.
No, you don't have to, but.
Okay, cool.
Okay, Chief?
All right, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm LJ Fazaro, the Towns Police Chief. Joining me today is Deputy Chief Paul Gately. I think you've, you've seen us every year for the last, uh, eight or nine years, I guess, so, so you probably know who we are. Um, I, I gave a pretty lengthy, um, introduction to the town council, and, and for the sake of brevity, I'm just gonna cut down on that, but hit some of the highlights for your sake. Um, I assume that you may have seen the council meeting, and you probably might have some questions for me, but um, you also know that the town and the subdivisions budget differently. So what I present to you is an operations and maintenance budget. Um, our budget, uh, does increase every year, but the, the, the primary reason it decreases is for personnel costs. Um, collective bargaining agreements, raises, all that sort of stuff. Uh, overall, our budget that I proposed to the town council and, and I'll back up a little bit, the, the original budget I proposed to the town manager was cut. Uh, there was additional position of an office assistant in a records division. About fifty-four thousand dollars was cut right off the bat. And then I made, um, working with the town manager at his request, we we initiated another fifteen thousand dollar cut before we even walked in the door of the town council. Um, but as you know, we, there's some, some significant, um, things that are in our budget that we have to, uh, make sure that we maintain. Uh, you know, I requested from the council full funding of the items. Uh, we're significantly larger than our partner departments, and we derive all of our funding exclusively from the town. We can't rely on the subdivision paying part of our needs, because it just doesn't exist. We get everything from the town. Um, and provide whatever services the town needs, and we'd certainly welcome the opportunity to collaborate with anybody and to share services, to assist, or to be good partners with our, our partner agencies. Um, with this in mind, please know that we fancy ourselves as good stewards of the public's tax money. We attempt to realize savings whenever we can. Uh, whenever we do realize those savings, and it happens with, with pretty, uh, regular occurrence, where we turn those monies back to the town. So if we can find things that we can save, or if there's, uh, you know, costs that don't occur, for instance, there wasn't a major event, you know, may, certainly during COVID, when we didn't have, like, the Mystic Irish Parade, and all these things that we kind of budget for, that money went back to the town. So we didn't keep that, it goes back at the end of the year. Um, our, the, again, the budget that I had proposed to the council was a four point four percent increase, and that amounted to about four hundred and fifty thousand, uh, four hundred, yes, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the largest personnel part of that was four hundred and eighteen thousand, but our operations only increased just over thirty-two thousand. Uh, it's also important to point out, when you look at the budget book, you'll see an adjustment in there of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And that's from the Board of Education, that's for the School Resource Officer at Fitch and at the middle school. So it's, you'll see it in parentheses in that budget book. So it is outlined there. Um, I also want to point you to a couple of the cost centers. If you look in your budget book, you'll see Cost Center Two was zeroed out. Uh, and, and, and basically what I did, I've tried to, we, we, you know, for many years, have been going through a, um, right sizing certain parts of the department, putting things where they need to be, and for instance, that, that is our criminal investigation division. So that's our detectives and investigators. We put them under one umbrella. Before, they were budgeted separately, it was kind of confusing. Uh, when I first came here as chief, they were tasked with doing similar jobs, but identified for, for, for certain specific jobs, i.e., the detectives were handling property crimes, major crimes, you know, homicides, things like that. Investigators were sex crimes, you know, teaching day, or doing some other things. So we've, we've kind of consolidated that. And we've made the community policing more robust. So we've taken, we've taken people and put them in the right column. So if you see those changes on this, that's why, because I worked with the finance department last fall, before the budget process, to put them in the right categories. So where you'll see increases in certain areas, but zeroed out in other areas. I, I hope that makes sense. I can certainly explain it a little bit more if you need it. Uh, we focus on our core competencies. You know, we've been heavy into training. In fact, in this room earlier today, uh, the, the Regional Police Academy, which was started last year, did all of their firearms training here in this building. Uh, they finish it tomorrow. So we're, you know, we try to be good partners, we, we have exceptional trainers. Um, yeah, Chief Knowles has pointed out before, we work with their officers, they come in here to do use of force training, firearms training, we have a great relationship. Um, the city of Groton has their range over at the, um, uh, the, the public utilities facility, they're part of this as well. So the training that's happened here in Groton, I'm proud of, and I think we should be proud of, because that, that speaks to the quality of officers that we have that are conducting this training for, for brand-new recruits from a variety of different departments. Uh, but we focus on training, patrol, investigations, community policing, public outreach, uh, emergency dispatch. Uh, as you know, our dispatch center is the nine-one-one hub for all of the town, as well as North Stonington and, um, a couple other entities. Uh, we provide animal control for the entirety of the town, and, and, uh, I also serve as the Emergency Management Director along with, uh, Captain B. So we try to be adaptable to current trends. Um, I'm happy to have Deputy Chief Gately here, because, you know, one of those things that we've tried to highlight, and I, I, I really can't speak enough about it, and I can't, um, undersell it, but it's our ability to have, have achieved Kalia accreditation this year. And just to give a brief example, there is a mandate with every Connecticut Police Department that we become accredited. But the state of Connecticut, through the Police Officer Standards and Training Council, incorporated a post-police officer standards and training council accreditation program a number of years ago. Uh, it's good, it's, you know, every department in the state of Connecticut has to get there. We, we have achieved that as well. Kalia is an entirely different thing, with a, an entirely different set of standards. Um, it's branded as the gold standard of accreditation. Very soon, you'll be seeing these stickers on the backs of our cars and for the public. Uh, that's, that's the mark of being accredited, not just nationally, but internationally, all for North America. Um, it was a heavy lift, it was a lot of work. It was something that, uh, was undertaken a couple times in the past and never got off the ground. Uh, you know, when, when Deputy Chief Gately came on, he really took the bull by the horns. We updated our entire policy manual. We met all the standards that are Kalia. You know, these are, this is, it's a big organization, it's, we had to go out to, um, Alabama back about a month ago, uh, defend our department, you know, ask all kinds of series of questions. We had, um, an individual that came here for three days back in December, was carte blanche, could go through everything and anything from, he was from Chicago. We had another group of people back in September, October?
October, November.
October, you know, ten days, time flies, that, that did a wholesale inspection of all of our policies, did it remotely, we had to upload all this stuff, we have to show proofs. Um, we're, we're, we want to maintain this, it's a good thing for the town. Uh, it, it does help, uh, and as the town manager explained to the council, uh, you know, our our insurance carriers look upon this favorably, because we're adhering to best practices. So if there was something, any litigation against the town, or any critical look at us, they would look at our policies and understand that they're Kalia accredited. So if you look at the tier of this, there's several tiers of post accreditation, this is Kalia, entirely different program. Again, it's international accreditation, and as they, they brand themselves, it's uh, the gold standard. So we're, we're proud of that, and, uh, we've even put it on our letterhead now, so we're, we're happy to do that. Um, did I miss anything on that?
There's only five percent of law enforcement agencies in the country have achieved clear accreditation. It, it's, it's unique. There's about twenty local agencies in the state of Connecticut, municipal agencies that have Kalia, we're one of them.
And we're the first and only one in southeastern Connecticut. So that's, again, another, another, uh, source of pride to, to our officers and, and the department. Well, and why am I telling you this? Because our budget also includes a position. It includes a position for accreditation manager. Um, I'm requesting an officer, because that is, we, we have much more flexibility with an officer than civilian staff. For instance, if we're shorthanded, if all of a sudden, you know, take a couple years ago, COVID just decimated us, that officer can work as an officer. A civilian can't do that. Or if we have to mandate people come in for an emergency or something, we can mandate that officer to come in. So since, since the deputy chief, um, handled this project for the bulk of it, it is a considerable amount of work. And his duties are not exclusive to this. His duties are internal affairs, he does professional standards, our training folks report to him. He's my right-hand man, so anything that I, I am not handling, or if I'm not here in the building, or if I'm on vacation, he is in charge. Um, so we do need a person to do this, and in fact, if you read the report, um, and I have all of that in this binder here. But what it said is we're the exception to the rule, meaning that we had a group of people that put this together at, you know, before we went through this process, and that is usually a recipe for failure. Uh, unfortunately for us, we had the right people doing it. Deputy Chief, one of our lieutenants and patrol officers, worked hard to, to manage this, but it can't sustain that way. Um, every year, we have to go through this inspection, we, when, when we received the Kalia accreditation down in Birmingham, Montgomery, Alabama, you know, the second page of that outlined the dates for the next four years when we're going to be inspected. Um, it is a good program to be a part of. Um, you know, again, I'm, I'm proud of it, but I uh, I just gotta, I, I just gotta highlight the important need that we have for this accreditation manager. I know Chief Knowles talked about it too. Um, we're managing it for a, a significantly larger department, but also a, a different accreditation level. So we, we desperately need that position, and that's why I thought it was important to highlight it to you. Again, if I missed anything, please.
I, I think that's great, Chief. I mean, we've, we've, um, published a hundred and twenty-four policies during this process. We replaced the policy manual from nineteen ninety-nine. We, we are leading the pack on our policies and policy development. It also included, when you have new policy, sometimes you have forms that go along, different procedures that we have to do. It's an incredible amount of work to do. I, I'm, I'm proud of the fact that we got to this point. You kind of need somebody that's gonna be the conduit, the person that's gonna be able to process all the changes, all the information. And when the chief talks about the fact that we have to provide proofs, that means for, there's a hundred and sixty standards that we have for Kalia, and those are bold and statements, not just like one thing. It's, hey, you have this plus A, B, C, D, E. And you have to show proof that you've done each of those things for every year. So, and, and it's, it's very complicated, there's a lot of different things that you, you have to comply with, but they're, they're best standards. It's analyzing things we do, it's doing inspections of the things that we do. And, and that's why it's incredibly important that we maintain every step. It's the, like they said, it's the best we can do.
Sorry if I'm beating the drum too hard on this, but it's, it's the first time for us, I'm really proud of it. Uh, you know, the deputy and I came from an agency that was Kalia accredited. And a lot of times, we did things, we just didn't know why we did them. You know, we did them because we were taught to do them, or told to do them. And then we learned through this process why we did it, and it's usually because there's something that happened somewhere that instituted this particular policy. But just to, again, to, to highlight a couple of things, they, they had a couple of areas of interest that they really highlighted in our review, which was our community policing program, talked about Chase, which I know you guys, everybody knows Chase, right? That's, that's, uh, the most popular member of our department. Um, our evidence, uh, handling, our use of force training, both the training, as well as the use of force review team that we put together, they saw that as a um, a best practice to pass on to other agencies. And, um, you know, we certainly had a lot of good feedback from our community partners and people that, um, that this, it, it, so he didn't just interview people here, by the way, when they came out here, they interviewed people in the community, they, they talked to the mayor, they talked to the state attorney's office. Um, they talked to a variety of people here in town. Um, so that wasn't, it wasn't just us saying, oh, we're, we're wonderful, you know, accredit us. That's not how it works, they really go out and they do a lot, they did a public portal where anybody could talk. Um, so that's, that's why we're, we're looking for that position. Um, a couple of things to highlight too, where we, we pride ourselves in being an adaptable agency to, that responds to current trends. You know, both of the, the chiefs that were up here before talked about how things have changed since twenty twenty, and indeed, they have. And we've responded with that. We were the first apartment to wholesale adopt body worn cameras. You guys have heard me say that before, we did that in twenty seventeen. Uh, first apartment to go on, in the state, to go on the state radio system. In fact, today, I was talking to the town manager of another community in, in western part of Connecticut, who had questions about that. We were, we were the first agency to do that, at a savings, and I had to explain to him the great savings to the town of Groton by going on that system, and, and no longer having to manage our own radios and the infrastructure and all that sort of stuff. We divested of that at a savings to the town taxpayers. Um, and because you're already paying taxes to the state of Connecticut, those radio towers already exist, so it, it made a whole lot of sense. Um, and a lot of agencies have followed suit. We've been on Next Gen for several years now, that's our CAD and RMS system, that's when people ask for a police report, we write it on that. When, when people need statistics, like the FBI or the state, that's our component to that. And when the officer's out there doing a police report, putting stuff in, it goes into that. So you heard the discussion about Next Gen, and we did that several years ago, and, and we're the first, again, uh, in this part of the state to use that system, because our, our department force, we could foresee where all the things were going, and we wanted to be on board with a, a Connecticut company, and that's, that's been uh, good for us, and, and I'm glad to see a lot of other agencies in southeastern Connecticut are following suit. Um, I pointed out our training, we take it seriously, our community outreach specialists have been tremendously, uh, uh, successful, they're available for whomever, whomever in Groton needs them. Um, and they've been at the forefront of a lot of things that are going on, they've provided a lot of resources to our officers, a lot of follow-up, and a lot of community contacts that are exclusive to them, and not utilizing police officers. So they've gone out and helped on a lot of things. You know, we've got them involved in some of the more high-profile things that are happening in the town, where it, people are impacted, and not maybe in a law enforcement capacity. But there's certainly a connection there, and, and I really appreciate both of them being part of this, and I appreciate the RTM's support of this. Again, they're, they're, they're a godsend. Uh again, they're 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 a godsend to us. Uh we also work with mobile outreach. We've been doing that for years. They've had an office in our building for a number of years, so we're we're glad that other uh agencies are 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 considering doing that. That's great. Uh and our um one thing that they're a part of now is the reinstatement of our juvenile review board, uh although we don't call it juvenile, we there's another acronym it's called now. Youth diversion. Yeah, youth diversion team. And basically what this is, the town did have one. It kind of went by the wayside. Uh you know, I found in our officers really and 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 it's available to both Groton Long Point and the city of Groton. It's Groton's, it's not exclusive to this department, by the way. It's Groton's juvenile review board. We're reinstating that, but that's a diversionary program if if a juvenile is arrested. There's a couple of different ways that we can handle that juvenile. Uh you know, you can take them into custody. You can try and get them to a juvenile detention center. But really what you do is you give them a juvenile summons or you make a referral. And this allows our officers in the city and Groton Long Point, for that matter, to refer juveniles to this review board. And and it's a kind of a diversionary program rather than going to juvenile court. And if juvenile court gets a case and it's a Groton child, they can send it to the review board, and there's certain things that they can do. They can find, you know, they work with counselors, they work with the schools, they work with a bunch of different entities to provide some diversion that gets them out of the criminal, the juvenile criminal justice system and hopefully sets them on the right path. That's the, that's the idea anyway. Um what else? Um I, you know, I know it's brought up. Um I'll just I have this here. I, you know, technically the sorry, I brought too many, too many packages. Um. We uh, well, it was highlighted before, we have a significant fleet issue as well. And and our fleet um is sizable. You know, this year, we were only budgeted for two vehicles. Our 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 fleet is considerably larger than our partner agencies, and they certainly need vehicles as well. Um okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I prepared this, and it may be something that you have interest in talking to others about. I know it's probably not something we're going to get into too much here. But I'll provide this because it gives you a a, you know, a direct idea of where our assets are. And what I mean by assets are are our vehicles. And I'm sorry for those that are online that can't see it, but these are that's the status of our fleet right now. Um we desperately need cars too. Um those are in the public works budget, but that's just so you have that when you when you go to the RTM. I'm certainly prepared to talk to them. But you know, you can tell, you can see by the numbers where our fleet is. We've got fifteen vehicles over a hundred thousand. We've got um we've we've got a significant E there as well. Um and there was, like I said, well, there was two cars budgeted. Um so you understand this. We, when our officers go out and they work a construction project, if they're out on overtime and you know, there's, there's a somebody doing road maintenance or doing some project, an officer is hired. Some of that money comes to the town. It doesn't go to them exclusively. It comes to the town to reimburse the town for the vehicle. So there's a fee, a vehicle usage fee that's assessed every time that that officer or one of our officers goes out there. Oh, we have another eight over seventy thousand. Um I've laid them out here. You can also see down at the bottom, full transparency. We did buy three cars last year that are down at the very bottom. Those are vehicles that are being fielded now. Uh and what we do is we cascade vehicles down. So those that are the highest mileage or the oldest or most need of repair, we get rid of. If you can see on that, there's a red one down there. It's a twenty fifteen Sorento. It's one of our detectives' vehicles. We're getting rid of that because it's just cost prohibitive to to repair. So we're going to get rid of that car. So um you know, that, you know, I appreciate and understand and 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 don't knock anybody. I know, I know vehicles are a difficult thing, and COVID made it worse because they weren't building cars. Um there have been many years where we didn't get cars and it's a it's a universal problem, but I would just, that's our entire fleet. You know, we're at at the council, I believe we got three vehicles passed. That's the same as our partner agencies. We have a lot bigger fleet. So I I, you know, to the extent I can beg you to maintain that and also know that one of those cars is paid for out of funds that are already available. It's not taxpayer money. It's money that we've accumulated over years by assessing uh uh an extra few dollars on every hour that an officer works at a construction project. So that's where that comes from. Um and finally, and I'm I'm sorry for going too long. Just to to kind of put things in perspective, I hear this all the time, trying to be proportional and fair, uh you know, at at the end of the day, you know, we we received some significant cuts. I told you, we before walked in the door, I understand the taxpayers want to know what they're getting for their buck, and they should know. Uh we we walked in the door of the council already, you know, working with the town council, uh the the town manager received a cut with from my proposed budget of fifty four thousand dollars plus another fifteen. So there's sixty before we even walked in the room. Um since that time, we we, you know, the original budget that came to the council was approved. I was asked to come back and a hundred thousand dollars was cut out of that budget. Um so we, they did grant the other position, but yet the funding that went with that position seems to have gone away. Um I I'm certainly conscious of the fact that there's other factors at play here and and there's, you know, increases elsewhere. But as I told you, we've stayed within our budget. We operate with the funds that we're given and will continue to do that. If there are funds that are left over, we give them back. Uh and I think after this, we talk about our CIPs, right? So is, are we talking about that? So I'll I'll kind of leave the rest for that, and I can highlight where we're at with that. But uh there's a sizable difference in in the cuts that were made as it relates to this department, and I just want to put that on the record. So uh I can talk about the other items later on, but.
Yeah. Any uh questions? Uh well, this is, I wanna, I wanna move the original figure of ten million, six hundred and seventy one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second, mass it.
Maybe we want to speak towards that figure?
No, but actually you really prepare a very tight budget and having cut, and also I do appreciate the, you know, Kalia um accreditation. It sounds like quite a process, and you don't want to lose it either. You want somebody in place that's going to help.
Absolutely.
With all the work that you put into it.
All the work that he put into it. We all did, but you know. They don't call him Policy Paul for nothing.
Yeah.
I support the the original number. And then I was going to ask you about the Next Gen. So you mentioned that that, so the city is now, do we get any savings of like the whole area? Do you think?
Well, yeah, you probably, but I, you know, listen, we we compartmentalize things, and I understand why. Uh but but there is some, there's certainly savings to be had in certain areas, which you know, that's a discussion for you folks to have. Um but but there is, um, we've had it for a number of years. Again, it's a good system. None of these systems are perfect, by the way. But I'll I'll just give you an example. A number of years ago, we had two different systems, even in our own building. We had the computer rated dispatch system, and we had the record management system, and they were two separate things that didn't connect, and it was unwise. We fixed that by going with Next Gen. Um and Next Gen is a Connecticut company. I I I do think it's the way to go. It has a uh a significantly lower price point than others, and you get everything. When you buy Next Gen, you don't have to get à la carte stuff like you do with other vendors. They give it to you all. You just have to ask them to flip the switch on. So there's probably some, some I I would think the answer is yes, but that's a bigger discussion, I think, in in working together and collaborating. We certainly do whatever we can to help any of the agencies, any of our partner agencies to to do things.
And I do have one other question because you mentioned it at the town council, but I wasn't quite clear. So you talked about some of the vehicles and how you have to, you know, it's not just you buy the car, but
Sure.
in it.
Sure.
But that equipment often doesn't match the car.
Yeah, I can explain that. So so we have um you you buy that cruiser, the, listen, our our officers that are on patrol are on police packages. The reason why they're in police cruisers, there's different crumple zones, different brakes, different hoses, all this different equipment in there. There's a lot of safety features. If you look at a Ford Explorer and you look at a Ford, what you think is a Ford Explorer, it's actually a Explorer uh police interceptor. It's not, it's not the same. There's different chassis, there's different stuff. But what ends up happening is when Ford redesigns that car, all the stuff that fits in it, the cage to put the prisoners in, and there are legal requirements that we now have that have been passed in the general assembly about seat belts and passenger safety as a result of some unfortunate things that happened to prisoners here in Connecticut. If you take a twenty fifteen police cruiser and you buy the same model in twenty twenty four, the stuff that fit in that doesn't fit in this. And and next year, they're going to change it again. So every year, and and it's unfortunate, the Crown Victoria that was around for twenty five years, it it, yeah, it all worked, right? It went from one to the other. Now I think maybe the vendors have have changed their, so so what it's, we've had to adapt to that too. Not just, you know, we've looked at other vehicles. We've looked at, we've, you know, Chevrolets, Dodges, Fords, but you take that car and let's say for a round figure, it costs forty thousand dollars, you've got to add sixteen thousand for that, for all the equipment that goes into it. Um where we can, we will utilize things again. We utilize light bars more than once. We utilize radios more than once. Uh but the other stuff that goes in it, the 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 seats that have to be if you look in one of our cruisers, there's plexiglass in the back, there's cages, there's plastic seats, there's restraints back there. All that stuff isn't compatible with newer models. So I hope that helps.
Yeah.
Well, like, not if you're Ford. I guess it's, you know, or the vendors, it makes money for you.
It's money talks.
Yeah. So I hope that answered your question.
Anymore on this figure? If not, I can take a vote on ten million, six hundred and seventy one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. All those, the favorites, you know, have a saying, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I figure passes.
I hate to do that, but unfortunately, we are in a sad situation with the budget overall. And in a manner of speaking, we're defeating the whole purpose of what has been cut and now putting back in. I normally do not vote against the police budget, but I'm sorry, Chief.
I appreciate that. I just, again, you know, what we don't spend, you guys get back.
Yeah.
We're good stewards of this.
Yeah.
You stay within our budget, you know. I appreciate what you're saying. I I don't take offense to it, but I just think it's important to point that out. We always stay within our budget. And it seems that, you know, no good deed goes unpunished, right? So.
Exactly. But unfortunately, the taxpayers are getting to a point
Yep.
where um budgets budgets are killing us.
Yeah, well, we pay a lot.
I know, I know people who have been having problems, you know, paying their taxes and uh it, they're getting forced to a point where they're going to have to sell their house because they can't afford the taxes.
Yeah, I I get it.
Yeah. But I'm sorry. I don't like doing this.
I respect it. I appreciate.
Okay, next on the agenda is CIP seven J. That's on page two forty nine. Yes, that was zeroed out by the town council. Zero, okay.
Sorry, too many books here. Um seven J is our vehicle that we'd asked for. Right?
Correct.
Because I tend to take these up.
Yes, it should.
So, so, yeah, that was, that was zeroed out by the town council. We had um received funding last year. So I I like to keep this picture on the back of my book. This is what we used to have that we divested of several years ago. It was in the back lot. When I became chief, we, you know, the deputy chief and I, in our prior experience, had other vehicles like this that we got rid of because they were not real reliable anymore.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, this this vehicle thing because of what happened on the bridge.
So so what I pointed out to the council is in addition to that, you know, that was one critical incident. We had three other fatal accidents. We had a homicide. We've had multiple instances where this would have been utilized by our officers and certainly made available if if there was a need in the town. Um we requested this last year, the the town council had appropriated a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. You know, costs have gone up. They didn't appropriate the entire funding that we had asked for last year. They gave us essentially half. Uh I have priced them out. They're they're not cheap. Um uh you know, but but it is something that's needed. We don't have that resource, and we haven't had it in a number of years. And this is only one example, talking to Chief Vinesse and Assistant Chief Cooper from, some of you may recall from many years ago, there were other um vehicles that we had, just something that we can go out, we can take to a scene. Our officers go out, they have to shuttle things back. We had that unfortunate fatal accident with with a young lady um in front of TJ Maxx. You guys will recall that. That was a motorcycle crash. It got a lot of statewide notoriety. Um you know, shuttling things back and forth like barriers, like, you know, the 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 equipment our officers need to do reconstruction, you know, evidence stuff, you know, waiting for. And and here's another one, and I'm I'm cautious about saying this because I don't want it to sound unsavory, but you know, we we had to do some things out in the field there to try and block the public's view of um of the scene. Um and it and it created a lot of work on our part, and and this is something that we could utilize for that, not just for for protecting the scene, but certainly for critical incident response. And that's what, that's what it's, that's what we're requesting it for. I do understand your point. You know, I understand the um, you know, and certainly I can appreciate the fact that they they zeroed it out for this year, but I really have a lot of heartburn with the fact that it there was money appropriated, and not only was it zeroed out for this year, but money was taken taken away for last year. Um after we've we've articulated this need for several years. Um it is something, it's all explained here. Uh and Deputy, am I missing anything on that?
Your itemized listing had.
Seems, oh, yeah, oh, okay. Um so so here's, here's where I'm going, and thanks for pointing that out. So one item that uh I started talking about during the regular budget, you know, proportionality and fairness, I know, are not necessarily part of budgeting, but it seems like we try to portray that when we're talking about comparing and contrasting agencies. You know, if you take the CIP along with the budget that we proposed to the to the council or the town manager, I should say, you know, overall, as I'm sitting here today, the department has gotten five hundred and forty four thousand, three hundred and twenty five thou- uh three hundred and twenty five dollars in cuts. That isn't fair. It's not proportional. It's just, you know, and I I appreciate what you're saying, and I get it. I understand that. If I was told, hey, listen, there, that money isn't there this year. We're not going to put that money into it. I can, I can swallow that. I can, I can get it. Uh but it it just seems uh almost insulting that it was taken away, and I'm sure there's good reason for it, and you you've articulated what that is, and I respect the will of the council, and I respect certainly the will of the RTM, but you know, we forwarded this a- as as a proposal that would be something that would sustain for a long time. And that was the intent, not for something that we're, it's a recurring cost. It's a, it's a capital improvement project that's going to long outlast our careers. I can guarantee that. Um but you know, I hope there would be some consideration and maybe maybe splitting the baby on that one, and that's just my my request. That makes sense.
I think you guys talk a lot about working with other departments and helping each other out in different ways. Are there other neighboring the police departments that have one of these vehicles that we could use?
No, we don't.
Yeah, so we did have one, then it would, would we use it to support other?
Well, so we are in a collaboration, for instance, when, you know, we have the incident, uh the accident reconstruction team. So when our officers, when there's a fatal accident here in Groton, you know, we get support from Stonington, Legerd, and Groton City. We were, we were all a team on that, so we were, we all respond. If there's, similarly, if that happens in one of those communities, we have officers trained here that go out and do that. That's, you know, that's, that's a great resource.
Right.
Um but there's no, they don't, there's nothing else that supports that. This, would would we utilize it for that? Certainly. Um but it's, you know, it's, there's a lot of things that we have events here in Groton where it could be utilized as well, and it's something, like I said, it would be, it would be used, but.
And none of the other towns are about to get one.
No, no. Like I I I like to, as I pointed out to you in my, we we like to be the leader, not the follower. Um those are the, there's, we've done a lot of things in this department that other agencies have have responded to by doing the same thing. And and um, you know, that's through the goodwill and support of both the council and RTM that we've been able to do that and certainly affect our 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 overall operations and ability to provide services to the community.
The one thing I was thinking about this vehicle, he's in the town council cut to a hundred and twenty five thousand. They moved it from the CIP.
That's correct.
Yeah. Now you're looking for two hundred and fifty, and that, and this is where I I get confused. You actually need three hundred and seventy five thousand for this vehicle.
We put, we put additional money in it to be safe. This is, this is prior to knowing how much. Again, if we don't spend that money, it goes back to the town, but that's correct. We did put more money in it.
I'm just saying that uh, see, we don't have the power to put any money back because the town council wants to take the hundred and twenty five out. You know, the only thing we can give you is the two hundred and fifty, which is not enough for the vehicle. And yet, next year, they can just probably pull that out of the account too. So I'm saying that's why I'm kind of like stuck here.
Yeah.
I don't think we, at this committee, with anything that I don't think, we, at this committee, there's anything that we can do. To actually help you out on this.
Yes. Yeah, I, you'll, we, we priced them out and they were, they were between two hundred and fifty thousand and three hundred and fifty thousand, essentially what they were. Yeah. So we, what we could do is rema- we could. Manage our expectations, if there were money there, I would tell you, I would buy something with whatever funds are available and, and, you know. Probably not get what we had hoped for, but maybe something that would work. But, again, listen, I, I. I respect what you said before, I understand where you're coming from, uh, but had I, had I known this going into the, uh, the budget this year that. Uh, in such a different, uh, situation, obviously, these were prepared many months ago, so it's hard to, you know, it's hard to envision where you're at at that particular time, but.
I know the council has made, they were in a very bad position with cuts and stuff that they had to make.
Again, I'd point, I. Other than maybe the Board of Ed, I think we were the number one, yeah, I think we're the number one recipient of cuts. When it comes overall, and again, I respect whatever the, at the end of the day, we're told to do and we're given, I respect that and will manage. Um, as we always do, but, but, you know, I'd like to be, I'd like to at least get. You know, hopefully credit that we're good stewards of the town's taxpayer dollars and that we do return those dollars if we don't spend them, but.
Yeah. Like I said, I don't know what we can do on this item right here.
Other than give some money back, but then that's not guaranteed.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
It's always confusing what you can do, what you can't do, yeah.
Use the two hundred and fifty, I'd be willing to put up one twenty-five.
We can do that, we can actually add another one twenty-five and hope.
And hope that.
Hopefully the council.
They leave alone, but then I'm defeating my whole purpose of trying to save everybody money.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, either way, you save two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
What makes no sense to me is the. You give back what you don't use, which, which is all well and good, I think everybody. Everybody tends to over-budget something and, uh, you know, the, the rationale is. Well, if we don't spend it, they're gonna give us less next year.
Well, no, that's not, that's, that we never employ that.
No, 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 but I'm just saying in, in general, that's, you know.
I, I can give you a better example, um, for instance, last year, the council and R T M approved. And it's, and it's not in my budget because it's, it's this facility, which is, as you know, in the public works budget, they budgeted for a new locker room. And we thought we, you know, we've got estimates, we budgeted what they said that it was going, you know, Greg Hanover sent his folks over, they looked at it, we had a bid. It all came in considerably higher than was expected, so there wasn't enough money, right? So it, it, you know, that's the other example, it's one where it was not enough money was put into it and it went way over, so. Um, yeah, we don't, we don't pad them, I mean, we, we understand, we, we estimate and, and. And I just told you, you know, some of the, we talked about the cruisers a little bit, again, in public works's budget, where we kinda know what they're gonna cost. But then prices spiked, you know, if you, in twenty twenty, we bought two Dodge Durangos, they were twenty-six thousand dollars a piece.
They are now.
Those are now forty-something thousand dollars, so.
That's why I don't buy a new car.
Uh, uh, listen, it's the, you know, obviously, it's the will of the elected bodies here in the town, as far as what you grant to, to any department, to this department, it will be good. Regardless of what you decide, we'll be good stewards of that money, and if there's money left over in any category, it goes back to the town, we don't spend it frivolously, we don't. I've never adopted the old, and I know many people do. In the army, they kinda did this, if we don't spend it this year, they're not gonna get, you know, we, we, we don't do it that way, we look at where we are, we do an estimate, and you know. In the budget, there are estimates, um, and as the town manager has pointed out, he sometimes doesn't pay attention to those because. Those are just a, there's a, they're a guess, the first half of the year, we may not spend a lot of money in a certain category, the second half of the year, we may overspend in that category. So it kinda ebbs and flows.
You guys do get a couple of grants though, too, right?
We do, um, a- and we, and just to kinda give you the history on this, we explored. A lot of grants, I called Congressman Courtney's office, uh, we looked at a bunch of things to try and get this funded elsewhere, looked at, um. Other opportunities, and that's been. Five years, so, you know, we've, yeah, we, we, they, the equipment grants have kinda gone by the wayside, there's a lot of technology grants now. Um, but really, there's the, the type of grants, and for example. Um, there was a, another department bought a similar vehicle probably ten, fifteen years ago. That was bought entirely on a grant. Those don't exist anymore, and that's, you know, before I came to the town council, I, I did my homework in trying to find those and. Figure out if there are any other monies that we could use, and, and my hope is, to your point. That we'd be able to leverage other funds, there's funds that sometimes come into the, the department through asset forfeiture, we just haven't gotten those. You, we're hoping to get some in the future, but we haven't gotten any, that would certainly cover the cost here, but if we were able to couple those with something else. You know, in the, in the future, that's, that would make up the delta.
Joe. I have a question. For the chief, um.
Excuse my back.
Oh, no, it's fine, it, so, this may sound silly, but last year, I had major heartache. With the fact that they just wanted to give you half of the money, and I'm thinking, you can't. Do half of a crime scene, you're either gonna do it all, or you're not gonna do it at all. So my question is, I know that you all do solve crimes. But does this vehicle. For want of a better term, enhance your ability to solve crimes? If that makes sense.
It does at the scene, it helps us manage the crime scenes and the incident scenes, not just crimes, it's incidents, right? So, uh, and, and again, and I'm deferring on past experience, myself and, and, and the deputy chief here. Both spent time with the state police major crime squad, I commanded it, he was a detective and a supervisor there. And when we went out to a major scene, it was a, it was a platform, you, there's a desk, there's an area where all your processing equipment on it, there's a generator. So you can sustain operations, but also, I'll tell you, i- i- in one of the reasons why I felt it was important here, I can remember being out on a Christmas day. Out on, when any, or there was a fatal accident, our officers out there, I, I'm, I'm sorry, New Year's Day, um. Couple of years ago, I, I forgot what year, um, it was cold out, it was freezing, our officers were standing out there processing, they can't, they can't bring, they can't warm up, they can't get their. You know, they're processing evidence and having to put it in their car and stand outside while this is going on, rather than being on a platform that happens to help you operate, um.
Okay.
So that, that's where, that's where the need, and also, you know, can happen in the counter, right? During the summer, last August, it would have been out at that scene that we had that, that unfortunate fatal accident. Where all the officers can operate, it also keeps you out of. One of the reasons why it's critically important, it keeps you out of a public view, so if you're having a discussion about a crime scene or an incident. And you don't want the public to know about it, you're, you're encapsulated in there, and there's sometimes when we don't want them to know about it, especially if we're. We're talking about suspect interviews and information that's being shared among police officers that we don't want the general public to know because it may compromise the investigation. That's where something like this is helpful, a- a- and listen, I, I, I do get it, and I'm, I'm not, I've. I've had lengthy discussions over the last several years with the town manager on this particular, and he's been supportive, we, we do appreciate and understand. The budget, um, predicament that, that the town is in, you know, and there's never a good time, right? But I, I know this year's a challenge, that's, that's what it'd be utilized for, and have we managed without it? We had, we have, is it optimal? No, I mean, does it, if we don't have it, is, is the department gonna collapse? No, it's not. Uh, but it is one of those things that we've had in the past that we no longer have.
It would make your job easier.
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you.
But I, and, and listen, in all due respect to the council, I know that they were. There's, and you have the same challenges now about dealing with stuff, but, um. I, I do understand that and respect the decisions that are made, but I would be doing myself and my department and the people that work here a disservice by not advocating for them. Um, and much like the discussion that came up about our regular budget at the council, you know, who are you gonna get, I, I'm not gonna play. Police officers against civilian staff, it, it, we'll, if, if cuts happen, we manage where they're most effective. Or where they're least impactful, I should say, um, and we manage it internally and, and, but, but they're all. Every one of our officers, dispatchers, civilian staff, A C Os are all critical components of the department, none more valuable than another. Certainly no more valuable than me or the deputy or anybody else, they're probably more valuable. But. So anyway, that's, um. And these figures that, that were in here are, are guesstimates, so there are, it's, it's a bit scalable, so those numbers that we came up with. Um, you know, quite frankly, had, had I known that we, nothing was in the future, I would have tried to find something less than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and it may not have been exactly what we wanted, but. Uh, it may have, uh, you know.
Well, unfortunately, any budget for anybody, business, government, uh, you as an individual, you know, it, you can't. They can't figure it out exactly, it just, it's always a ballpark figure, and hopefully you're gonna be in the, pretty much the right area.
Right, our, our locker room's an example where it wasn't, and that's a lot of people that are smarter than me when it comes to that stuff that worked down at Public Works, you know, they. They were scratching their heads too, so.
Can't go on eBay and try to find one of these either.
No, it, but we have looked for used ones, and, and it's a, it's a, they're, and I've talked to the vendors when, when this happened last year, I did look for used ones. That would be suitable, that, but they, they get snapped up, and you gotta kinda have, be ready to pull the trigger right away, so they do come up from time to time. And there were a couple others that we used that just wouldn't, they were too big, they were not things that would, would have, I don't want, we don't need a motorhome, we need something small.
You don't wanna live in it overnight.
No, 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 no.
You used to have a motorhome.
That's one of, that's what, one of these, that's what Chief, uh, Vinesse and Deputy Chief Cooper or Assistant Chief Cooper were telling me about, was it? It was, uh, they did say it didn't have much of an engine, it couldn't make it up that hill very fast, so.
Good biggest thing to junk around.
Yeah.
Ever talked to our community policing?
Yep.
He had it down there all the time, he's, I can't believe to give you the signal to drive. Uh, any more questions?
Uh, I guess, uh, I have one, uh, for the chairman of, of the.
Yes, sir.
Yes, hey, thank you, um, the, the, the issue that I've seen is that the town council. And, and through the process of the R T M, there's been a, a lot of, uh. Money that, uh, has flowed from the contingency for. Actually, we have been pretty much, if everybody remembers, because it gets. Well, since a year ago from last March, we have been pretty much doing C I Ps. It's usually set for the, the budget part, like you all know, and, uh, but, um, it has dried up the, uh. Uh, contingency fund a bit, and also the capital reserve fund, and the capital reserve fund is for capital improvement projects. So, uh, it's just, uh, something that, um, just as a, a reminder, maybe perhaps, uh. If I, everybody was sent the, uh, um, uh, spreadsheets for the, uh, capital improvements. Uh, projects and also the, uh, the, the normal big one for all the departments. And if you'll notice in the, in the, in the, uh, one for capital improvement projects, um. You'll see a lot of things coming out of the general fund in order to, um. Fund capital improvement projects, this one isn't particularly the one, but it's just something to be, um, aware of. That's all I, 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 I needed to say, and to be helpful, uh, thank you.
Any more questions? Uh, I take a vote on this figure, zero? All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye. I hate to say aye, but aye.
Okay, aye, aye, all opposed?
Aye, alright, no. Whatever.
Bailey, you opposed? Representative Bailey, are you opposed?
I'm a aye, thank you.
You, you want, you're passing it, you're a yes, right?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay.
That, that's for.
Jackie's a no. And that figure passes three to two. Okay, Alex says, I wanna basically, I'm gonna bring this, more or less the R T M, and try to find out what's. You know, because, because of the money they cut from this, we approved last year. It, I don't wanna go through and put in the.
No, I understand.
Cause that won't be enough that you're looking for, for this vehicle, you have to go through all the year, we're better off if you want, especially the next year, be two. The one twenty-five, one twenty-five, and then another one twenty-five next year, because as of right now, you're not gonna be able to get it this year at all anyways.
No, understood.
So, uh, I'm gonna, I'm basically gonna bring this up on the R T M meeting. About that, and then I'm gonna do some research between now and then, talk to the manager and find out, you know, what, what. What can we do in the R T M about, and I'm worried about the money that was cut, the one twenty-five.
I understand it.
Excuse me, Chairman Baril?
Yes.
You have me, do you have me as a zero for that?
Well, you voted yes, right? Put a zero, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, yep. Alright, that's it, we have, uh, any motion for a German?
Nope, we have one more C I P.
We do.
And they, I think they put it under the wrong category, it's the parking, they might have put it under, uh, uh, it might have inadvertently gotten put under, um. Uh, planning and O P D S.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I don't know why that happened, but, um, it's actually our proposal, I, I think it was done erroneously, somehow got. Put on the wrong committee.
Okay, uh, the C I P is that?
Uh, I can give it to you, it's, this is my copy, but you certainly have it, it's a municipal, it's, well, I don't know if it's in your budget book where it would be. Cause I don't have it. Um.
It's, uh.
Municipal parking solution?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember here.
Two forty-seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Oh, okay.
That's actually, I don't know where that, if it wound up, like, as I, I, I do recall John Reiner saying, hey, why did this? Somehow it must have just gotten lost in the shuffle, somehow ended up with their stuff, does that make sense to anybody? Cause I did talk about this at the town council meeting, so it should have been here.
Or in with the Y T people.
Wasn't their proposal either, I don't know where it went, yeah.
Could inadvertently have gone into them.
Yeah, what does say, I don't know, but so was it some of the other C I Ps that are police centered too that are under the technology part?
Yes, Representative Bailey.
Um, thank you very much, um, I think that was probably to be slated for Community Development and Services Committee.
Yeah.
Uh. That's why it wouldn't be on our, on our, uh, agenda.
Yeah, so they don't have a list of.
Well, we, we have to be careful to only cover what we have in our agenda, that's.
Yeah, this is not. It's gonna make me come back to another meeting.
It's not on our agenda, so we can't really cover.
Well, I know you can't vote on it, am I allowed to speak on it, just so you've heard what it's about?
You can speak on it, yeah.
Well, listen.
So, so this, uh, we have been working with a bunch of different groups and, and, um, it, maybe that's why, if you look at the title of this, it says downtown Mystic is a popular destination year round. The police department, O P D S, have been actively working for proactive solutions to parking challenges in downtown Mystic. Uh, we've done this for a number of years, I've met, we've met in this room, myself, the chief from Stonington, a number of years ago, kinda started this collaboration because we figured. Whatever impacts this side of Mystic impacts that side of Mystic and vice versa, parking is a challenge in Mystic. And so, we, I, I'm not telling you something you don't know, there's, there's some things that, that I think long-term, we, we're, we're gonna all need to, to come to grips with and figure out a way to. To address them, but one of the things specifically about the police department that we're looking to address is our ability to. Quite frankly, give out tickets, parking tickets, they're not the same as traffic tickets, when an officer stops a car on the road. For speeding or something like that, that's centralized infractions bureau, that's a state ticket that goes, this is municipal tickets. Alright, you're right, so if we, we have them now, we have carbonized copies that are in a pad that we issue our officers, um. They're not very efficient, and quite frankly, it, we've kinda, there's other things that need to be done when a parking ticket is issued, like document where the car was parked. You know, and now it's gotten to the point where. They have what's called electronic chalking, you know, it used to be in the days, you'd take a piece of chalk, you'd mark the tire to know if the car had moved or not. Well, now we do it electronically, they do it through a cellphone app. Where a picture is taken of the tire and the valve stem, things like that, to see if the car has been moved. Um, this manages the entire process, so your person could be out there, either our C S O or officer can be out there and, and write the ticket. Put it on the windshield, it allows for the, the person who receives it to pay by app, right? They don't have to come, they don't have to send a check to the town, all that, it's, it makes it, it's electronic, so it's all done that way. It also manages it for us, it's a whole software program that goes along with it, so it prints it right there, it's got a little printer. And the handheld device prints up the ticket. And the handheld device prints up the ticket, puts it there, meanwhile, it sends it up to a cloud, the person sees that, they can pay it directly, if they don't play it. Uh, pay it, what they, what it does is it puts them in a scaffaw, uh, for category, meaning, all right. You know, Fazaro's parked his car there, he didn't pay the ticket, he's back again, right, he hasn't paid the previous ticket, so there, it allows us. The opportunity to take further enforcement action on that vehicle, you know, right now, it's all done in that room over there by our clerks, hand counted. Um, it also does some first level adjudication, meaning that if someone says, hey, listen, that wasn't my car, or that's not, you know, I shouldn't have gotten the ticket. Because I was in a parking zone, here's my proof, the the software allows it to take care of that, rather than coming to the police department and us appointing a hearing officer to do this hearing. Um, you know, my guess, in in this is for, the the proposal is forty-seven thousand dollars, again, that's based on an estimate that I got. From a company, a couple of companies that do this, um. Uh, my my guess is this would pay for itself, you know, i- i- and with time, whether it depends on how. How fast we can get our officers up to speed on it, how much they use it, um, but but you know, we are enhancing our patrols in Mystic. We are putting more people down there, particularly during the summer months, but it's become a year-round challenge for us, so this is to do that, uh, uh. Much like Chief Burton had talked about some conferences, I found, you know, a couple of different vendors at some conferences that we thought would be, um. You know, they gave me the, their sales pitches, and I listened to what they had to offer, and this is kind of the price point where it came up at, so, and that money does come to the town. Unlike the infractions that our officers write for speeding and stop signs, that goes to the state, this money would come to the town. All right.
Did the council cut this?
Council did not cut this, no. And that's why I I did talk about this to the town council, I don't know why, I think it was inadvertent, why it went somewhere else and and. And my, uh, you know, like I said, John Reiner had pointed that out to me, and my my apology, I thought it was rectified that you guys, um. Would have seen this tonight, because I would have expected to talk about this, because it is our proposal.
Actually on finance.
You know.
They met last night.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
You know, if they approved it or not, that's news to me.
I really don't know. Yeah.
Well, that's what it is and what it's there for, and it was our, it was my proposal, I put it together, um, so.
We can always meet again, I guess, we have to, quick.
Yeah, like I said, I get this, the the list of all the committees that are all everything, so it, like I said, this, it's right here listed as finance, so. But if it brings money into the town, I can't see why they.
There's, there's a lot of, you know, and it's a, it's it's bigger than just me in this department, but there's a lot of things that we need to, you know, to talk about that. And I, listen, I love going to Mystic too, my wife and I go to dinner there quite often, it it, I fight for parking spaces like everybody else's, it's a challenge.
Well, I can see, considering the fact that the businesses are mostly on the Groton side, uh.
Yeah, and that's a big discussion we've had, there's, there's, there's reasons why, there's, there's some, we did a du- a study, the town paid for a study, we worked with. Stonington on that, there's some suggestions, and and I think we we we've gotten to the point where we really need to start considering, you know, doing some stuff. So, but, you know, we'll, we'll be partners, we'll we'll help shepherd the process with, as far as enforcement, what the police department can do. But, you know, there's a whole collaborative, there's, there's a whole.
Your parking garage.
Well, yes, there's.
And no on the street parking.
Read the report, read the report, I'm not disagreeing with you, but there there's some other solutions that we can consider, and there's some strategies, and there's some. Opportunities for, you know, they've they've leveraged some of the places downtown, some of the, um. Churches, although they have to be careful with that, because they're nonprofits, and there's some locations and. It's, it is, it's getting more popular, not less popular.
So I just, uh, my partner is actually on the finance committee, he says he doesn't recall them packing it last night, but they meet again on Thursday.
Okay.
Might be on their Thursday agenda.
All right.
All right, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, it's to me, okay.
All right, all I got left is a German.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor for a German?
Oh, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And that would be, uh, eight thirty-six.